Good evening everyone and welcome to this meeting of the Outer East Community Committee. My name is councillor Michael Miller and I'll be chairing today's meeting. The Outer East Community Committee covers the Cross Gates and Winmore, Gaffath and Swillington, Kipaks and Methley and Temple Newsom Wards and is a committee where ward councillors have an opportunity to discuss and make decisions about services and priorities for the local area and also consider funding applications for local community projects and youth activities. Could I remind everyone today that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. Can I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourself? If I could spark from my right and I just want to say that today is Andy's birthday. So happy birthday Andy.
Thanks Chair, Stuart Byrne, Communities Team, sparked in this meeting.
Andy Bowles, Clerk to the Committee.
Councillor Mary Harland, Kipaks and Methley Ward.
James Lewis, Kipaks and Methley Ward.
Suzanne McCormack, Councillor for Gaffath and Swillington.
Mark Dobson, Gaffath and Swillington Ward.
Councillor Nicole Lloyd, Temple Newsom Ward. And just to say Chair that my colleague Helen Herden will be a little late in another meeting.
Councillor Pauline Graham, Cross Gates and Winmore Ward.
Hello councillor Jess Lennox, Cross Gates and Winmore Ward.
Good evening councillor James Gibson and I represent Cross Gates and Winmore Ward.
Thank you everyone. Can the Clerk please run through Agenda Items 1 to 5?
Thank you Chair. Under item number 1, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under item number 2, there are no items on the agenda which require the exclusion of the press and public. Under item number 3, there are no formal late items. There is some supplementary information which has been distributed prior to the start of the meeting and that includes the Environment Champion Profile and some additional funding applications to be considered along with the Finance Report. Under Agenda Item number 4, could I ask members if they've got any interest to declare? No? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item number 5, we've got apologies for absence from Councillors Field and Councillor Cooper. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Agenda Item number 6 is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 11th of March Could these minutes be accepted as a correct record please? Thank you. And do members wish to raise any matters arising from the minutes? Oh, perfect. Item 7 is the Open Forum, which still remains on the agenda. So at the discretion of the Chair, a period of up to 10 minutes may be allowed at each ordinary meeting for members of the public to make representations or to ask questions on matters within the terms and reference of the Community Committee. No members of the public shall speak for more than 3 minutes in the Open Forum except by permission of the Chair. I can see that there aren't any members of public present in this meeting today. Obviously, this is a new format for us, so I'm sure there are thousands at home watching. But going forward, hopefully we will have some members of the public engaging either here or through watching and commenting and things like that.
If members of the public are watching and wish to make a deputation online, are they able to do that or do they have to turn up in person?
That is a great question. I mean through this, they wouldn't be able to make a deputation. However, we are the first community committee that is meeting of the year, so I'm sure this question will come up quite a lot and it's something we can have a look at. Oh, Andy?
Yeah, deputations can be brought to community committees as they can to full council. So if any member of the public wished to do that, that can be done.
Thank you. The question that I felt wasn't clear is, can they do it online or would they have to turn up in person please Andy?
Normally with a deputation, I think it's to turn up in person.
Cool. So Agenda Item 8 is the Chair's Role Profile. We would have, obviously Ollie would have been here to present that unfortunately, due to personal circumstances, he's not able to attend today. But we've got the fantastic Stuart who's going to run us through it.
Thanks Chair. So this is the first of a number of reports that have come out of the Community Committee's review that's been taking place over the last 18 months. As you'll be aware, there's been a number of consultation workshops, working with all 99 members and also other offices and services that have been involved and linked with the community committees. And this meeting is the first meeting of the newly shaped community committees. Alongside that review, there's also been the reduction of committees from 10 committees covering the city to 8 committees covering the city. So a number of committees have changed their geographic boundaries. This committee hasn't. However, one of the recommendations out of the consultation and the review from members, some of the feedback from members was that they would like to see greater clarity around the roles of the different positions within the committee. So the first role profile which is covered under this Agenda Item is the role of the Chair, which is included at Pages 15 and 16. This report just asks for the committee to comment and note that role.
Do members have any questions or comments about the Chair's role profile? No? The only thing I want to say is I'm happy that we've got one. So I know what I'm doing and you know what to expect from me as well. So Agenda Item number 9 is the Community Committee Co-opted Members' Profiles. Stuart, if you could take us through that as well?
Thanks Chair. So like the Chair's profile, there was also a recommendation that role profiles were developed for the Community Committee Champions' Roles. So this report includes, oh sorry, this is a co-op team members. So one of the things that the committee also has the power to do is to, and is within the constitution, is to co-opt members to the committee body if it so wishes. So it's a consideration for the committee whether you wish to do so. This has always been there as a potential option for committees. Outer East hasn't traditionally decided to co-opt teams.
Do members wish to ask any questions about the co-op team member profile? Councillor Gibson?
In fact, it goes into it in the paper, so I don't need to, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Agenda Item 10 is the Community Committee Champions' Profile.
Thanks Chair. As I was previously alluding to, alongside the role profiles for the Chair, there's also been role profiles developed with the exec members, lead senior officers around the four Champions' Roles within the committee. It should also be noted that those Champions' Role titles have changed slightly from the previous Champions' Roles under the former committee structures. So there is a Champions' Role around Children's Services, there is one around Community Safety, one around Health Wellbeing and Adult Social Care and within the supplementary pack, there is also a role profile that has now been signed off and approved under the theme of Environment. So as I say, each of these profiles has been developed in conjunction with the Member Working Group, has been approved. They've each been developed alongside Lead Executive Members around each theme and Chief Officers with responsibility for leading on those themes. So those role profiles are there for comment and for accepting by the committee.
Thanks Stuart. Do members wish to ask any questions about the Champions' Profiles? No? Perfect. Anyone that's attended the Community Committee Review sessions will be very, very familiar with these roles by now. Agenda Item 11 is the Outer East Community Committee Delivery Group Nominations.
Thanks Chair. So as part of those Community Committee Champions' Roles, it's proposed that each of those Champions would create a delivery group, a lot like the old subgroups that the Champions used to run, but more linked to a formalised delivery plan and with a more formalised work programme around those delivery groups. So this report is asking the committee to nominate Champions for each of the four roles and then asking members to nominate from each Ward a potential representative to sit on each of the delivery groups under those four themes. So Chair, shall I take you through the appointments? Under Children's Services, is there any, are there any nominations for Member Champion?
I will nominate myself for that role. Did it last year and happy to continue doing it. As I said at the dry run meeting, Ollie delivered the best youth summit across the city last year and we will be delivering it this year. Thank you councillor Gibson.
If all members are happy to agree to the appointment rather than voting on each one?
So the second Champions' Role that we're looking for nomination for is Health Wellbeing and Adult Social Care.
Have we got any nominations?
Chair, it's just, James, you did the Health last year, didn't you? But yeah, if you need, I was going to nominate you, but if you need to, if there's a conflict of interest, you might need to look into that.
Well, if you're happy to accept the role for the time being, but we'll just double check that, yeah. Okay. So councillor Harland, you're second in James's nomination? Oh, you're nominating? Perfect, could I have a second then? Thank you councillor Lennox. And we're all happy with James doing that role. Perfect, thank you.
The third role is Community Safety.
Have we got any nominations for that role? Perfect, thank you councillor Graham. We've got a second for councillor Graham, councillor Lennox, thank you. And we're all happy with councillor Graham. Brilliant.
And the last Champions' Role is the Environment Champion.
Have we got any nominations for that role?
Chair, I'm happy to do it if nobody else wishes to. Could we do that? It's just that the Environment sits in both our portfolios, so it might be, although if you want to do, you'll be Champion and I'll join the subgroup.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you councillor Lennox. We're all happy with councillor Lennox being the Environment Champion. Brilliant, thank you.
That conversation probably takes us nicely into the nominations for wards for each of the, so as we have one nomination for the Working Group for the Environment subgroup, have we got nominations from Temple Newsom and from Gaffath and Swillington around the Environment stream? About scoring the Working Group around developing the projects and priorities for each four.
Perfect, thank you councillor Dobson.
I'll take it back to the top now. Children's Services, so obviously councillor Miller would represent Kipaks and Methley, so from the other wards on the Children's Services subgroup.
Perfect, thank you, I'll second that. Anyone from Cross Gates? Yes. Perfect, thank you councillor Lennox. Thank you councillor Park.
Adults and Health, so obviously we have councillor Gibson potentially Champion, so it will be the other wards.
Don't all speak at once. Councillor Lewis, thank you very much. Councillor Cooper. Perfect. Great, councillor Field, thank you.
And lastly, Community Safety. So councillor Graham would represent Cross Gates and Winmore as the Champion.
Councillor Harland. Councillor Lloyd. Councillor Dobson, perfect, thank you. And I guess the thing to say about these subgroups, delivery groups, whatever we'll call them, is they are set up now to actually deliver something as opposed to just being a bit of a talking shop, which they have been for various reasons previously. So it's an exciting year to be part of them because you'll be able to go back and say this is what we've achieved as a result. Perfect. So Agenda Item 13 is the Outer East Community Committee Forward Plan. Sorry, I've missed out Agenda Item 12, which is the Community Committee Appointments, which Andy's going to run us through.
Thank you Chair. If I can direct members to page 34 of the agenda and to paragraph 6, we have a table there that lists the annual appointments to outside bodies, cluster partnerships, the local care partnership and the corporate parenting panel. Rather than go through each one by one, could I ask members if there are any proposed changes to what we appointed last year? Are members happy to continue with the position we had last year on yours? Okay, thank you, we'll do that. And if I can just bring your attention to paragraph 23 regarding Corporate Parenting Board, says that any members who have a specific interest in that can wish to attend their meetings. Okay? Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Now we will move on to Agenda Item 13, which is the Outer East Community Committee Forward Plan. Stuart, you okay taking us through that?
Thanks Chair. So as I briefly mentioned earlier, one of the roles around the review was to more formalise and structure the work programme of the committee. Part of that formalisation has been the development of a Forward Plan which will outline the work structure. So one of the tasks that Ollie will undertake on behalf of the committee will be to start to populate this Forward Work Programme, which will come under the themes of the Champions and will work on those priorities and identify work streams under the different priorities that each of those delivery groups sets. And then through each committee, we will report back at each cycle of committees around progress that's been made against that Forward Plan and Work Programme. So Pages 45 to 50 are the template for that Forward Plan. And as I say, Ollie will be working in coming weeks and months with yourselves to populate that, to work out how the committee will work. So that is just noting that that's the way forward and that will be the form that that Forward Plan will take.
Thank you Stuart. Do members have any questions about the Forward Plan? No? Perfect, thank you. Agenda Item 14 is the Outer East Community Committee Finance Cover Report. Stuart, are you able to take us through that?
Thanks Chair. So this cover report is just to give a bit of brief position on the current financial reporting to the committee. As you'll be aware, with the changes to the, from 10 to 8 committees, that's impacted on the allocation of wellbeing to a number of the committees because that's all had to be worked out. That just happens to have coincided with the change of the council to a new financial system that has meant that we haven't actually had access to most of our financial records for the last month. So this report just outlines that although we were able to provide a position of the committee's allocation for this year, as it stands at the moment, we're just getting confirmation of the correct figures for all of the committees and carryforwards. So it's just for noting that within the actual finance report that we'll go on to next, the actual figures that are included within that are only the new allocation and don't actually provide background on carryforwards. But we will share them with members as soon as we have them available and obviously they will be presented at the next committee.
Thank you Stuart. Do members have any questions about the Finance Cover Report? No? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item 15, which is the Finance Report, which goes into some of the details about the applications we have at the minute.
Thanks Chair. So in lots of ways, it's probably simpler for this committee than the seven others because there isn't a change to boundaries. So this is very similar to previous finance reports. What we need to do today is approve the minimum conditions set out at paragraph 14, which is around how decisions can be taken between meetings. And this is the standard minimum conditions that we would normally ask, that the committee has previously agreed. It's worth noting at paragraph 19, the allocation of wellbeing to the committee for this year is £74,752, of which there has been a couple of approvals that were made at the last meeting, which were around the Community Committee part, which was £500, the Community Engagement part, which was ring fenced at £500 from each Ward and then the bin refills from both Gaffath and Swillington and Kipaks and Methley. So the bottom line of Table 1 highlights the available balance of the new allocation. As I say, that doesn't take into account the carryforwards and we will be presenting you with those as soon as we have the agreed amounts ratified by finance. I'll pause there before I go into project approvals.
Do you have any questions about the minimum conditions? No?
Thanks Chair. So on page 57, there are a number of wellbeing applications which the committee has to consider today. I'll go through each of those and ask members to indicate whether they approve or not. So paragraph 22, Project Igbo Union Summer 2025. This is a project that aims to provide children and young people, particularly those from disadvantaged and underrepresented backgrounds with fun, safe and educational day out at the beach. The amount that's requested is £343.20 and the way that that's split down is Cross Gates and Winmore £78 and Temple Newsom £265.20. Members are asked to consider the application.
I think Cross Gates and Winmore are happy to support.
Yeah, we had some questions about, oh sorry, sorry though. Some questions around where they're getting their figures from because they're based on last year.
Is the mic on, sorry?
No, it's not. Sorry, I'll start again. We had some questions around where they're getting their figures from, was it based on, did they do the same thing last year? I can't remember. Yeah, I can't remember them operating in Temple Newsom last year, so we're just wondering, you know, because it's based on the split and it's not a large amount of money, so, you know, and we will be happy to support, but just where the data's from in terms of the number of children from our Ward.
Yeah, I mean, given that the amount's under £500 anyway, if you did want to not make a decision now and do it via email, that's fine.
Yeah, can we do that? It's just that we did have some questions around this because they're a new group to us. So yeah, we just had some concern about the names that they've, yeah, or not, they haven't given names, but the numbers, yeah.
That's fine councillor. I think Ollie may have had a response from this, but he left at lunchtime quite speedily, so it wasn't, didn't forward all of the emails that I was expecting.
Perfect. So just to clarify, Cross Gates and Winmore will be supporting the application and Temple Newsom will be making a decision on it shortly.
Thanks Chair. The next project is laptops complex investigations at Leeds District and this is from West Yorkshire Police. The police were requesting £2,000 for a specialised high-powered laptop to help them within their education. So it was to, there was a suggestion that Inner East also be approached to potentially fund one of those laptops. So what's actually been asked for here, I think the indication is that Inner East were likely to say yes to that. So what's been asked for here is one under £2,000.
Yeah, so yeah, just to clarify, following that discussion we obviously had at the finance briefing, we're now being asked to fund just the one laptop, so it's £500 from all the wards. So could I just get an indication whether everybody's happy with that? Perfect. Cross Gates, Kipaks and Methley are, Gaffath are and Temple Newsom are still deciding. The laptops, £500 for the laptop?
Yeah, happy to support.
Thank you councillor.
Thanks Chair. This next one is for Temple Newsom and it's from Meadowfield Primary School and it's a litter picking project, purchase the litter pickers for the green team at Meadowfield. And the total project cost is £188.
Yeah, we're not supporting that, but I know that Oliver has gone back to the, yeah. Yeah, we're not supporting that, but I know that Oliver has gone back to the, yeah.
Yeah, I believe Oliver's already gone back to Medfield to point out other options for where they could connect you get the litters pickers from, et cetera.
Yeah, and big thanks to Oliver for doing that, appreciate it.
The next project is Leeds Outer East Crime Reduction. The amount being sought is £2,266 across all four wards. The funding is to purchase anti-burglary equipment for those who are victims of crime and in premises in close proximity to burgled premises. The MPT will also create engagement event promoting crime reduction, including advice around domestic target hardening, et cetera.
My preference on this project is that we defer making a decision just for now, because at the finance briefing we had asked whether the amount could be reduced and it hasn't been. Now, it may well be that Ollie has spoken to him, there's a reason it can't be, but obviously because he's not here, we're not able to know that information. And we'd also asked some questions specifically around where the workshops and things like that would be happening. So if members are happy with that, just until we get a bit more information about it, I'd like us to defer that application. Councillor Dobson?
Just a, thank you Chair, just a very brief comment on this one. Yeah, I think we're right that we need to be looking at the actual amount, which seemed a bit eye-watering for what they want. But just by pure coincidence today, I don't know if, the e-bikes raised its head again after months. We committed ages ago to supporting that, so I'd have gone back to the police today and pointed out, kind of along the lines of the discussion we had in the finance meeting, that there needs to be some better coordination really amongst our police colleagues about what they actually want and when they intend to submit bids. Because if they're coming in piecemeal during the course of the year, it could be that a really worthwhile project comes along that we're going to either say, well, come on guys, you've had a good run for your money, or we've not got the money. So I do think we need to send a clear message back that there needs to be some better coordination amongst West Yorkshire Police and what they actually require from us and when. So I've made that point today, but I think if that could be relayed back from our perspective through the committee, I'd appreciate that.
Thanks councillor Dobson, yeah, I completely agree with that. And I think this is a great example of something that can be deferred to the new delivery group for community safety to have a discussion, to invite some representatives from the police along for a meeting, just to agree kind of ways of working and just so that we're all on the same page with a bit of a forward plan in terms of what they will be coming to us with. So if we're all happy with that, then we'll defer that conversation and also this application to some extent to the delivery group. And then we can always ask for our email if we do have amended figures and things like that for what members would like to do support-wise.
Thanks Chair. The last application under this section is Prince Philip Centre Fab Club Staffing and Entertainment 2025 Six. This is a project that's used to help the physically disabled embodied group that meets out of the Prince Philip Centre. They pick up young people from across the city, engage with this project. This application generally comes each year and the amounts applied for are worked out on postcode attendance. The total amount sought from the committee is £1,399.57 and the way that breaks down is Cross Gates and Windmoor, £127.24, Gaff and Swillington, £508.94, Kipax and Methley, £127.24 and Temple Newsom, £636.15.
Do members have any questions about this application? Or comments? No? Okay, perfect. Cross Gates, are you supportive? Perfect, thank you. Temple Newsom, councillor Hayden?
It's quite a lot of money, you know. Because we did have some questions about this, didn't we, and the sustainability of it and just how many, because it's quite a lot of money for quite a small amount of people, isn't it? I realise that they have a high level of need.
Yeah, I think we also did ask for some further information on this application. Again, Ollie may well have that information already, but obviously we don't have it at this meeting. So if members did want to defer and withhold making a decision now, that would be completely reasonable. Councillor Dobson?
Thank you. I think councillor Hayden's made the point very well. It's a really worthwhile organisation. We've been supporting them in this committee for donkey's years. But the amounts are getting a little bit on the higher end for the number of people who are being supported. So perhaps if we can review that one and if they come back with some figures that are more favourable, we can have another conversation.
Yeah, well, I can also pick it up as part of the Children's Services subgroup as well. I think Kipax and Methley will also be deferring our decision. If my colleagues are supportive of that.
Yes Chair, thank you.
Great, so just to clarify, Cross Gates are still supporting the application and other wards will be deferring making a decision?
Thanks Chair. So if we now turn to page 59, this is Youth Activities Fund Budget Position. So public committee's awareness, yeah. The allocation of youth activity fund to Outer East for 2526 is £41,594. So that means there's £10,398.50 available for each ward. There is one application which has been earmarked for approval at the last committee, which was the youth service diversionary activities, which worked out at £5,173.25 for each ward. Which leaves a balance for each ward of £5,225.25. So if we continue down to paragraph 29, there is just one application that's been submitted for YAF funding for consideration, and that is Breezing the Park for 2025, which relates to Cross Gates and Windmoor and Garthafen Swillington. And the amount proposed is £7,700 between both wards. £3,350 each.
Cross Gates are all supportive of the application and Garthafen Swillington, perfect. Councillor Dobson?
Just a quick question about Table 2. If it has been raised, and I've missed it, apologies, but did we have any, if it's reflected in the form, I'm just not seeing it, it's been a long day, did we have any rollover money from last year?
So like the wellbeing?
It's the same.
It's the same, we don't have the signed off figures because of the finance.
Cool.
Perfect, thank you. And then we've just got a couple of additional items that we just need to run through for clarity's sake. So that's Agenda Item 15, which covers a couple of funding applications that we have previously discussed, but we just need to quickly run through them again Stuart.
Thanks Chair. As raised at the finance meeting, as we've been looking through finances and previous applications, we have noted that there are a number of applications that when not 100% sure, have been noted for their decisions. So we wanted to bring them back to this meeting, just so that we can make sure that they are formally noted within the committee's minutes. So the first project was Swillington Christmas Lights 2024, where the total project cost was £4,792, with an amount proposed from SIL of £2,800. Now those lights, that's taken place, we just needed to make sure that that was noted as a decision. And I believe that Ollie has processed the payments, et cetera.
Councillor Dobson?
I was just going to say about spot the deliberate mistake, it's for 2025, but yeah.
No, no, this is, so it was there as a line on all the finance spreadsheets, but when we've looked back on decision noting, we couldn't see a note of a formal decision being made. So we wanted to make sure that it was brought back.
Stand corrected, yeah, apologies for that, yeah. So we've been telling, I suppose I better put on record there an apology to Swillington Village Council, because we've been swearing blind it was paid, so. But at least now we know it's going to be paid and we can report that back to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second one is Windmoor Park Provision of Informal Play, which was £30,141.37.
Councillor Lennox?
Yeah, this has been something that we've been working on with Parks, to spend some of our money from developments, which have been happening around the ward, and we're really pleased that it's going ahead.
Thank you.
And the third project is Public Spaces CCTV Cameras for Outer East to Leeds Watch, which was £12,000, which covers all four wards. And these are the ongoing costs at the below sites. So Cross Gates times two, Nairborough and Approach, Windmoor, Holton Village times three, Kipax and Methley times two and Garthafen Swillington times four.
And everyone's supportive of that. Perfect, thank you. And I believe that
And that's all of the decisions within the finance report.
Perfect, thank you. Our final agenda item tonight is Agenda Item number 16, which covers the dates and times of the meetings. Andy?
Yeah, thank you Chair. The following dates have been proposed for the rest of the municipal year, of Tuesday the 16th of September, Tuesday 2nd of December and Tuesday 3rd of March 2026, excuse me. And at the dry run meeting, it was proposed to bring the start time back to four o'clock. Are members happy with those dates? The dates are basically based on last year's and to avoid conflicts with other formal meetings.
Yeah, just to make a comment on that for those of you who weren't at a dry run. Obviously while members of the public are absolutely encouraged to attend these meetings, still and hopefully will online, because of the focus being that they can be engaging through the delivery groups, there's less importance that we're having, the six o'clock meetings after work time for most people is finished. Which is why I think as long as members all agree, 4pm probably works better for everyone. And then the only other thing to note, as we spoke about earlier, is that the meetings will be taking place here at the civic hall in rooms six and seven, again for a similar reason. And it will also save us money on room bookings, which we can use for other things. Do members have any comments or questions about any of the dates and times of the meetings? Perfect, well, we'll bring a cake when you attend the meeting councillor Lewis. Big cake. Perfect, is there any other comments? No, great.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you, thank you for members of the public if you have attended, and look forward to seeing you soon. Thanks everyone.
Bye.